For which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's roll call, please, Carrie.
Sorry.
Mr. Abrams?
Here.
Mr. Collins?
Here.
Mr. Wall?
Here.
Mr. Weber?
Here.
Mr. Wessels?
Here.
Ms. Witt?
Here.
All right, citizens' comments. Does anybody want to address counsel? All right, moving right along then. We have three sets of minutes, the minutes from the August 6th city council meeting. We have a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve.
All right, motion by Weber, second?
I'll second.
Collins, any additional discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Wessels?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Abrams?
Stand.
All right, motion carries. Next up, we have the minutes from the August 20th special city council meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Witt, second?
I'll second.
Second by Wall, any additional discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Wessels?
Yeah.
Mr. Abrams?
Here, yes.
Yes.
All right, motion carries, and then the last set of minutes from the August 20th city caucus meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make it.
All right, Collins, second?
Second.
Collins, any additional discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Wessels?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Abrams?
Yes.
All right, moving on to unfinished business, we have two items, Resolution 01205 regarding the statewide mutual aid agreement. Jill, you want to explain that?
Yes, so this is a document that the Kentucky League of Cities had worked on for quite a while. It essentially allows communities to provide mutual aid assistance across the Commonwealth in natural disasters such as flooding or tornadoes, and we would be eligible to streamline the process and for FEMA reimbursements. And that's essentially all it does.
I mean, it's really kind of a no-brainer, in my mind.
Yes, it is all about just trying to capture FEMA funding for reimbursement purposes in a disaster situation.
Okay, you want to read it, Brooke? Well?
And it is an odd, I'm sorry, Brooke, it's kind of at the end, it was an odd layout in the document, but it is, it's in a resolution format. Do you have it?
I've got it, yeah, but it, yeah, I mean, it's a, I may read the whole thing, because there's no little title on this one.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of blanks that need to be filled in, but it's a resolution, be it resolved by the governing body of the city, that the statewide emergency management mutual aid and assistance agreement is hereby approved and adopted, and that blank official title and blank official title are the primary representative and the alternate representative of the city, are hereby authorized to execute the agreement and to request, offer, or otherwise provide aid and assistance under the terms of this agreement for and on behalf of the city of Fort Wright, a public entity established under the laws of the Commonwealth of Kentucky, and for the purpose of entering into the agreement and thereby become a party to the emergency management mutual aid and assistance agreement. And then it reflects who made the name and title of who made the motion and who seconded it, and requires a certification, I would assume, Jill, presumably by the city clerk, but...
Yes, that is correct, yes.
That's the extent of it. It's page eight of the nine-page document. Okay, so primary and alternate representative, we have to name them. I'm assuming it makes sense that she needs to be the primary, and can Jill be the secondary?
It doesn't say.
It doesn't say, and I would encourage, I mean, that's what I would recommend to you, if you don't have any objection.
That makes sense to me, unless there's some legal requirement that she can't, for whatever reason. That, to me, is the most logical approach. All right, so then, do we have a motion to accept this resolution, make me the primary contact and Jill the alternate contact?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Weber, second? Wessels, any additional discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Wessels?
Yeah.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Abrams?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
All right, last item under unfinished business, the second reading of Ordinance 1025 regarding the new waste collection fees from our contract with Rumpke. You want to explain that, Jill?
Yes, so we had to go out to bid that service again this year, because our contract had expired on June 30th of 2025. We've entered into a new contract with Rumpke for the next two years, so this pricing would be good from July 1 of this year to June 30th of 2027, and the dollar amount is $276 per household per year, or per dwelling per year. And that is strictly a pass-through in expenses, we're not making any money off that, it is exactly what we are being charged for the cost of the service. And as part of that, of course, residents are entitled to the free recycling can, that's a 65-gallon can this year, which was consistent with previous years also.
You want to go ahead and read it? Yes, sir. Ordinance number 10-2025, in ordinance of the city of Fort Wright in Kenton County, Kentucky, amending section 51.09 of the Code of Ordinances to set the trash collecting charge, collection charge for the fiscal years 2026 and 2027. Okay, so, again, this is the second reading. Do we have a motion to approve? Collins, second? Second, Wessels, any additional discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wessels? Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Abrams?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
I'll stand.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Okay, moving along to new business, we have one item, municipal order 062025, disposal of surplus property, Jill.
Yes, we had just a couple items. We had a 2006 and a 2008 weed eater that needed to be disposed of, they were broken, and then we also had a black recliner in the fire department that had a broken frame and needed to be replaced. So those items unfortunately are trash, but we've identified them as surplus property so that we can officially mark them off our inventory.
Do we have a motion to approve municipal order 062025?
I'll make it.
Wall, second?
I'll second.
Witt, any additional discussion?
That's a black recliner in the fire department, we'll have to...
Here was that.
Actually, I think it's referred to as a safety chair.
Oh, okay, all right. The police probably came in and did a burning.
Ed would have a lot to say about this.
Around here, that chair is probably like a 1973 model.
I was going to say, that's the model, your model on that one.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. If there's no additional discussion, roll call, please.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Abrams?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Wessels?
Yes.
All right, that gets us into committee reports. The finance committee met today. I'll let one of you two discuss it.
We did meet. What's going to happen is you're going to receive a spreadsheet from Dave going over our proposal, but what's happening is because of a number of things. One, because the property values have gone up, which would, if we kept the tax rate the same, would, you know, we'd have a lot more money, and that's not really fair for the individuals of the city. The, we have good income coming from investments, and we get some other income coming from other where. So what we're going to be doing, we're going to be proposing to decrease the property tax slightly for the next fiscal year. So that's what we'll be seeing when you get that spreadsheet. So that's pretty much it, unless there's any questions.
I mean, overall, the news is good. Again, look for an email from me with the spreadsheet and sort of an explanation of it. But, yeah, hopefully. And then the plan would be, assuming there's no major objections to that, we will put that. So we're going to have a special meeting before the caucus meeting already. We would just put this on as an item for that special meeting to have a first reading to set the tax rate for next year, because we are working against the deadline here, so. So you should get that later this evening, especially since this meeting is going really rather quickly. Any other committee reports? Okey-dokey. Then Jill, CIO report.
I just had my written report that I've provided you. I'm happy to answer any questions about ongoing projects or day-to-day operations, if you have any.
Questions for Jill? All righty, administration department, what do you got for us, if anything?
Sorry, I'm busy with half reasons, so I haven't been to it all.
Yeah, just a heads up for anyone that's watching this. Again, once we have the second reading of the tax rate and it's set, you know, then we'll start working on getting the property tax bills out. We'll talk more about that as we get closer, but obviously that's a key task for us every year to make sure those get out on time, and that folks have an ample amount of time to make sure they get the payments in by the deadline. So stay tuned, we'll post about it on social media, we'll put it on the sign, we'll put it on the website and that sort of thing. Oh, and that reminds me, I don't know that we've really talked about it at a regular council meeting, right? We launched a new website. I encourage anyone that hasn't gone to see it yet to check it out. I think it not only is much more aesthetically pleasing than the previous website, but has been restructured in a way that hopefully makes it faster and easier for residents and businesses to find the information they need. So for anyone that does go look at it, you know, if you have feedback, if it feels like it's missing something, if you can't find things, I'd love to hear about it so we can continue to improve it. But I think, you know, again, there's substantial improvement in the overall look and operation of the website. So this, since I mentioned website, thought I would throw that out there. Any questions for Carrie? Naomi, you got anything for finance?
Well, just working on prepping the property tax rolls for import, and once I have all the information, I can get more of that done. And I recently just had a VOA meeting, and that's about all the big things that stand out besides my normal duties. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Any questions? All right, Chief Shuey, you got anything?
Really just the big things that we were ordering for the fire department. The monitor defibrillators have been ordered. The vehicle that we were trying to replace for the past two years, it took the order. That doesn't mean that it's not going to get kicked back out, because it already got kicked out once this budget cycle, but right now it's looking good. And then we've got the, we've basically got all the plans for the ambulance done. We're putting that into a format, a package to bid on, and now I'm looking at the chassis to get put under that vehicle, and then that package will be ready for vendors to bid on it.
Any questions for Chief Shuey?
And Friday is the, it might be on Jill's list, blood drive for the city through the Red Cross. Be here at the city building. Uh, Hoxworth, Hoxworth, yeah.
Yeah, so the blood mobile will be here, you know, we do this generally once or twice a year. I would just remind folks, it's a great way to help save lives, you can get in and out quickly, and, you know, if you can make it come out Friday, September 9th, what is the time, Steve? It's on our website, it's on the social media, we've sent out emails about it, we'll hit it again, but it's this Friday, and for anyone that might be interested that doesn't have the details, you can hit Facebook, Twitter, or the website and get the details from that.
And I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but that timeframe is by appointment only this time, and there are only two appointment slots left for whole blood and one left for the red cells.
Red cells, yeah.
So all of the appointments...
Put some back and take more.
And take more, yes. So it's almost booked, there were just a couple spots open, but people can't just come and expect to get blood this time, is my understanding. Is that yours, Stu?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm glad you pointed that out.
I didn't realize there was only two spots left.
Yes, there were just those two, two spots, I checked it the other day, so.
Good.
Okay, any questions for Chief Shuey? All right, Chief Colwell, what do you got from the police department?
Just a couple things. We had a successful cram the cruiser event at Northern Kentucky Bargain Outlet, raised a lot of cash, and basically crammed the cruiser for a lot of school supplies for kids at Fort Wright Elementary. That went very well. And then the other thing is, I wanted to recognize the police department, we were recently awarded the FBI LITA Trilogy Award, which is Law Enforcement Executive Development Association, and that's only given to agencies that where their entire command staff completes the trilogy process, which is 240 hours of additional training that covers supervisory leadership, command leadership, and executive leadership. So that group, the FBI LITA, were gracious enough to send us a nice plaque, and we got it hanging over in the police department, so we're proud of that.
Yeah, it's a great job.
Yeah, congratulations.
Yeah, it's awesome. It's a lot of extra hours of training, but we got through it. And I can't remember if I brought it up at the last caucus meeting or not, but we did active shooter training in Sadanis, we did it for two days. Some of the teachers were there, so they got to see how we do things. And then one of the other things that we had done is all the officers now were issued keys and key fobs to the school. If you watch the body camera from the school shooting in Tennessee, the officer that actually took out the shooter, one of the first things he does is he takes a key off his key ring and opens the door and goes into school. Oh, yeah. So I saw that, and I'm like, why don't we have keys? So reached out to them, said every, every police officer's got a key to the school, we can get in quick.
That's a great catch.
Yeah, good idea.
Any, so, go ahead, Jill.
Yeah, so I do, I do, and I haven't had an opportunity to talk to anybody about, other than the mayor, about this yet, but unfortunately, we did get a resignation from Officer Keller today. He had indicated he's just kind of finished with police work and is going to work in the private sector for security. He did give us a letter of recommendation, I would like to read it, if everybody's okay with it. It says, "Dear Chief, after much thought and with mixed emotions, I am submitting my formal resignation from the Fort Wright Police Department, effective September 16, 2025. For the past 10 years, this department has been more than just a place of work, it has been my second family. Serving alongside men and women of such dedication, courage, and integrity has been one of the greatest honors of my life. Together, we have faced challenges, shared victories, and upheld the values of protecting and serving the community we all love. I will always carry those memories and bonds of brotherhood and sisterhood with me. This city and its people hold a special place in my heart, and I'm proud to have had the privilege to serve them. While it is difficult to step away, I feel this is the right time for me to take the next step in my journey. Please know that my gratitude for the opportunities, mentorship, and friendships I have experienced here is immeasurable. I will forever hold the Fort Wright Police Department in the highest regard, and I leave with nothing but respect and appreciation. Thank you for the leadership, guidance, and support throughout my career. It has truly been an honor to serve under your command." So Brad has been an employee with us for about 10 years. He's fantastic, I hate to see him go. I'm sure the chief feels the exact same way. His last day with us will actually be the 13th, because he has a couple days baked in at the end of that that were scheduled off. So we're going to be looking for a new officer, and it is just kind of an unfortunate situation. I hate that he's leaving us. But it is kind of, in my opinion, indicative of the changes that have happened with the pension system, too. You know, there just really wasn't enough to hold him longer in the police career.
Yeah, because, correct me if I'm wrong, Jill, I mean, he's going to a private sector job. He's getting out of law enforcement entirely and going to a private sector job. So, yeah, it's really unfortunate. I think Brad's done a great job, you know, I've never heard anything positive feedback about Brad from people on the street that have interacted with him. And, yeah, it's, I mean, I'm happy for him that this makes sense for him, it's unfortunate for us, it's a loss for the city. He will definitely be hard to replace. So, yeah. And then, all of that said, obviously, we'll get the information together to put out the hiring notice, be looking for a new full-time officer. And, you know, as that information goes out, I would ask each of you, plus anyone that's watching this from home, you know, to help us share that on social media and so forth, so we can reach the largest pool of qualified candidates and hopefully get someone that can, you know, do as good of a job as Brad. It'll be tough, again, he really did an awesome job for the city, and it's a real loss for us. But wish him the best of luck in his, you know, future endeavors. If it doesn't work out, Brad, you know?
Definitely sad to see him go, but this is going to be a happier situation for him and his family, so.
A pleasure to have him, too.
Yeah, I'm happy for him.
Any questions for Chief Colwell?
How many did we have with the internet thing?
The total headcount last night was, at the internet fraud scam class, was 34. So we're going to have to look at, which, it was held here, so it was packed. I was going to wait till, use that for September's meeting, but we're going to have to look at maybe holding that at the Civic Club next time. I think it'll, that'll be a better venue for us. Turnout was great. They did a nice bid on Channel 5 about it, it turned out really well. And we're happy to do it. We had people from Union, Florence, Park Hills, Campbell County, from all over Northern Kentucky. So we're expecting the same, if not more, the next time. We're looking, we don't have a date yet, but we're eyeing for sometime in November to do another one, just before the holidays.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, chief, can you go over the LoRa traffic studies that were included? Are you able to do that this evening?
Before you do that, let me just throw out there, you know, as a reminder to folks, I would say probably, in my recent memory, the single biggest complaint we get on any kind of recurring basis has to do with traffic, speeding, et cetera. Right, there's probably no one on council here that hasn't heard from one of their neighbors about speeding or something like that, you know? And to be clear, we all know it's an issue throughout the city, especially on any of the major routes. You know, even some of the side streets get a lot of cut-through traffic, there's a lot of speeding, you know, I think we're all well aware of that. And, you know, to try to, to try to counter that, we've got these speed devices, the radar trailer, the portable stuff, because, again, it's not that we want to downplay people's concerns, but we do want to understand what's actually happening, not only in terms of how much traffic is there in a given neighborhood, because that can factor into our street program, and, you know, how frequently we're going to address the street conditions, but also general safety conditions, and then, you know, the larger concern that often comes up is speeding. So, you know, and in the past, we've had these conversations with people, people are frustrated, I get it, you're standing out in your front yard, a car goes by, oftentimes when you're standing there, it seems like they're going a lot faster than they actually are. And, you know, time and time again, from using these radar devices, in the past, we borrow Fort Mitchell's, you know, thank you to Fort Mitchell for being super generous with their equipment over the years, until we eventually purchased our own. You know, we put this stuff out there, hopefully as a reminder to help people slow down, and not to see it as a, hey, I want to beat the high speed on that device, right? And then also, it gives us some concrete data, so we can try to make, you know, smart data-driven decisions here, and not necessarily react to people's initial reactions, which, based on the data we often get from these things, are incorrect. And again, I'm not trying to downplay it, I understand, I'm, you know, out in my yard, and a car goes by and seems to be going really fast, often it's not going nearly as fast as you think. And I would remind folks, unless otherwise posted, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, the speed limit is 25. So, you know, even in a residential neighborhood, the speed limit is 25. A car going 25 when you're standing next to it seems pretty fast. You know, that is the speed limit. So again, I don't want to downplay this or dismiss people's concerns, which in many cases are legitimate, and we'll see anomalies in this data sometimes, where like, okay, here's a car that was going like 60. Well, that might have been a cop car, or it might have been an ambulance or something. So again, we're just trying to use these tools to make data-driven decisions and make smart decisions, and, you know, respond to actual, real situations as opposed to sometimes people's misperceptions. I'm trying to figure out a way to say this tactfully, that, you know, again, I understand, I've been standing outside, I've had people complain to me, I get it, but often the data does not show that the speeding is nearly as severe as people often think it is, which is why we do that. So with all of that, and I have not looked at this report yet, maybe you'll surprise me, chief, have at it.
So, this is, since we've had this equipment, this is the first time we've actually done a comparison, and we learned a little bit off of this. So the system that we have, it pulls, for this particular situation, we had it back in February of 2024 on LoRa. For approximately a week and a half, two weeks, I don't know the number of days, the equipment doesn't document the amount of days it was there. And this, this time, this go-around, we had it there for approximately a week longer than that. So it's a guess, I don't know exactly, because when you pull the data, it pulls it from that location for 30 days. So in order to really get an accurate comparison, I already talked with our captain and sergeant that run this program, we've got to, we've got to leave it there for an exact amount of time both times. So, you know, because...
That makes sense.
If you look at both of these, the current one, the total number count was 2985, and that's for a little over two weeks. And then I look at the last one...
So, real quick, I just wanted to clarify, you're saying that for the period reported on, there were 2,900 and something vehicles that went across LoRa, which seems insane to me.
That's a lot.
I mean, you know, this is essentially a residential neighborhood, I know people cut through, but I mean, we only have 6,500 is people that live in the city. You know, that is an insane amount of traffic in a short period of time.
Yeah, so there really is, I mean, there is an issue with vehicles using it as a passer to bypass this intersection. Speed-wise, you know, the highest speed I think we got out of that timeframe was like 32 miles an hour. But if you look at the traffic report from 2024, the number is 2843, so right about 1,000, at 1,000 short. But I think this was there for five to seven days less. And both of these were during school time. So we're going to, we documented this occurrence, I have it written down, I don't know the exact amount of days, how many days we had it there. We're going to do it again when school's not in session. So that's when the traffic's down, so like maybe the next holiday break, we're going to put it back out there for, like around Christmas time, and see, and do that two weeks, and try and do an actual better comparison that way. Because I don't want to leave it somewhere for 30 days, but if I can narrow it down to an exact amount of days each time, that would give us a better comparison.
Real quick, does this have the, like, the average speed and the median speed in it?
It does.
I'm assuming it does, but I can barely read Jill's screen, because I'm old and blind.
Yeah, it's got average speed for the, the time of the day. So...
So the average speed is 20, is that correct?
In the summary, yes, for the first...
Yeah.
What was that, 32?
So, and again, I don't want to dismiss people's concerns about speeding, but that's why I think this is valuable. And I would also point out to folks, you know, if you're concerned about speeding in your neighborhood, we can bring this over, we will happily bring it over. Now, it may be scheduled for somewhere else, we may not bring it immediately. And we know there are certain areas, because of the traffic counts, and because we know there's speeding, you know, you may not get the priority. But if you're concerned about this in your neighborhood, we'll bring it over, and we'll get some accurate data for you. I mean, I think it's fascinating that out of 2,985 total vehicle trips in this neighborhood for that time period, the average speed, if I'm reading this right, says it's 16. So speed limit is 25, they're actually substantially under the speed limit, the high was 32, right? So, again, I think a lot of times, when you're walking down the sidewalk and a car goes past you, it feels like it's going faster than this. Not discounting, there is definitely speeding in some neighborhoods, right? We all know this. So, like I said, not to beat a dead horse, if you're concerned about this, let us know, we'll get the thing over there at some point, we'll get some real data. And the other reason why this data is helpful is it does allow us to focus our efforts where there are actual issues, right? Rather than there's a perception that you have all this speeding in a given neighborhood, and we're spending police time there, there are other places where there are real issues, right, and we can focus on that. So again, it's not to downplay people's concerns, it's just to try to understand what is really happening and respond to it in a reasonable way.
The other thing that I think is interesting is, you can almost tell how many walkers are out.
Because you get like 2 miles an hour, 3 miles an hour.
1 to 5 miles an hour, those are all walkers.
Yeah, the 1, the .5 is me, hobbling my way through the neighborhood, you know, yeah.
Yeah. Is there a zero in there? That's me standing there.
And also, you know, for anyone, when we run these things in a neighborhood, I know in the past, we've generally posted these to the website, I don't know where that might have gone on the new website, we probably ought to look into that, Jill. But if you want to see the data, I mean, it's all public record anyway, we will be happy to share it with you once we've collected it, so.
Very interesting, thank you.
And if anybody, if anybody has a request, just reach out to me or anybody at the police department. Like, right now, it's on West Crittenen, we had a complaint of a resident that lives near Kentucky, the little walk, sidewalk there. So we're running data over there to see what the speeding issue is over there. After that, it's going to Warner. And then after that, it's, you know, we just kind of keep, try and keep it moving throughout the city.
Mayor, it is on, all those traffic centers are on our website, if you go to Services and then go to Police Department, there is a tab marked Traffic Studies, and you can see all of the data that we've collected back from 2020 on.
So we'll throw this one out there as well. Okay, any questions for Chief Colwell? If not, Jeff is not here tonight for Public Works, I don't think there's anything to report. report. Um, Brooke, legal counsel, you got anything?
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, special announcements, let me get to that. So, we've already touched on the blood drive this Friday, again, you need to register, there's two slots left, it would be great if we could fill those, you know, that's a huge win for Hoxworth and a huge win for the community, because I know blood always seems to be in heavy demand. We've got the community yard sale coming up Friday, September 5th, and Saturday, September 6th, which is this weekend, it's free to participate, out on the website, on the social media, you can get the links, basically, you just need to fill out the form to get a permit, it's free, once you do that, we'll throw you in the list of the advertising of people that are having this, so hopefully we can drive some more traffic to your place. Again, you know, there's no reason not to just go ahead and get your permit and get on the list, so that hopefully we can drive some more traffic for you, the 5th and/or the 6th, which is again, this weekend. Uh, and then finally, we have our annual shred event coming up in conjunction with Ruttler. First off, big thanks to Ruttler, they're a great corporate citizen, they've done this every year for us for a long time, and, you know, when I put my tinfoil hat, cybersecurity guy hat on, even though we're talking about paper here, you got to understand, criminals will go through your garbage, they'll steal bank statements and that sort of thing out of your garbage, you know, I would advise everyone to get their own shredder, or burn the stuff, or whatever, but if you're not doing that, this is a great opportunity for you to clean out your desk drawer, clean out your filing cabinet, get rid of sensitive information you no longer need, throw it in a box, throw it in a bag, show up up here at the city building, September, wow, September 20th is what I'm trying to say, show up here September 20th between 9:00 a.m. and noon, you can drive right in, someone will take it out of your car, truck, whatever, throw it in a shredder, you'll be in and out in probably less than 10 minutes. So, again, uh, it's, very thankful to Ruttler for helping us put this together, really appreciate them as a corporate citizen, and, uh, I would encourage you to take advantage of this Free Shred Day event on the 20th, if you have things that need shredding. If you have any questions, just call up here, but again, you can literally drive in, someone will get your stuff, throw it in the shredder, boom, done, you're out, in no time at all. Okay, um, that's everything under special announcements, and really, that's pretty much the end of the meeting, council comments, Marjorie, you got anything?
Just a reminder...
Oh, wait a minute.
...of fall cleanup on October...
I missed, go ahead, I don't want to cut you off, I missed something, sorry, I'll let Jill hit that after you're done, sorry, go ahead, Marjorie.
Just a reminder, October 18th is our fall cleanup, from 9:00 to noon here at the city building.
And we will, may I put that out via email, and website, and social media and such as well, just as a reminder. You know, we generally get a really good turnout for that, it's a great opportunity to come out, meet your neighbors, beautify the neighborhood, so, you know, I would encourage folks to go ahead and save the date now, and hopefully we'll see you on the 18th. Go ahead, Jill, if you have...
We did get two letters of appreciation from citizens, and I know that you like to...
I do.
...recognize those.
Yeah, I missed that, sorry.
This one is from Mary Selmer, she actually is from Beaver Creek, Ohio, and she writes, "I just want to drop a very quick thank you to the people of Fort Wright, my kids and I were coming home from a weekend away, and our car overheated on 75. We pulled off and stopped at the corner of Kyle's and Kennedy, popped the hood and waited for AAA. While we waited, three different people stopped to see if we needed assistance, one young man even used his little diagnostic tool to tell us what was wrong. Great examples that there are good people in the world. Gabe from AAA showed up in less than 10 minutes, too." So, that was just a general thank you notice, and then the fire department received a thank you also from Mrs. Rodriguez, who lives in our community, she had an emergency and called 911, and she said the two gentlemen who showed up to assist her were, and took her to the hospital, were courteous, wonderful to work with, and she wanted to express her appreciation to them, and how much of a pleasure they were to work with.
And, and real quick, on that front, I think I mentioned this at the caucus meeting, and I would have forgotten to bring it up, but I'm glad you, you reminded me here, Jill. Uh, I don't know if I can find the text to summarize here, I think probably all of you know, the trend camps, and, you know, down on ViDOT, and you may know, there was a lightning strike situation, uh, you know, they were both injured, went to the hospital, and their daughter, Suzie, who I'm guessing most of you probably know as well, kind of reached out to me and wanted me to express their thanks for the great job the fire department and EMT team did, and, you know, what a great community this is. So, again, I could read, I'll find the actual thing and send it to you, Steve, because who knows how many texts I've gotten since then, but, yeah, I wanted to pass that along, you know, they were very thankful for the great job you guys did, and, on their behalf, I appreciate that. So, I wanted to pass that along, pass that along to your team, and I would just say, you know, again, to anyone watching, you know, we don't often get a lot of feedback like this, so, you know, if you've had a good experience with someone from the team, we would love to be able to share, you know, you, you correct me if I'm wrong, Chief Shealy, Chief Colwell, obviously Jeff's not here to speak on his behalf, admin team, it's nice to get feedback that you're doing a good job, right? So, you know, again, one of the best parts of this job for me is to get this kind of feedback and be able to share it here in a public setting, so that the folks that are out there doing these difficult and dangerous jobs feel appreciated. So, I, I hope you know how much we appreciate you, but it's really awesome when folks out there in the public, you know, give us some feedback that we can share with the team. So, if you've had a good experience, we would love to hear about it and be able to share it here. Okay, Jason, Dave, Jay?
Um, just a little by now that President Trump is trying to push to get the interest rates down, pressure on reserves are, more than likely you will get a rate cut in September, so, there may be some, uh, the things that we've got invested already are not going to change, they're going to stay the same for a period of time, we got them in there. The stuff we're going to have to invest on going in the future may have to change. Given that, I would just, we will look at it, but I would suggest that maybe even though the rates for a little longer timeframes are less, there are for a longer timeframe, so, right now, the short-term interest rate's about 4 and 4 and 1/4, or something like that, if you go up to two years, it's like 3.81 or something like that, but it is 3.81 for two years, so, we'll have to look at those things, so just make everybody aware that we'll be looking at those type of things, so, that's all.
Scott?
I don't have anything. Pardon?
Quick thanks, Jill, uh, over the weekend, we had a citizen call about some signs and garbage that were tossed out on the right-of-way and stuff, Jill, and I think...
Wait, it wasn't Jenny's Mattress's closeout sale by chance, was it?
Yeah.
All the way to Fort Wright.
Wow, I would have never guessed.
We had over 40 signs.
Seriously?
Wow, yeah. The chief jumped and took care of that for us.
If you drive anywhere in Florence right now, they are everywhere, everywhere.
And I don't know what we can do to this particular businesses, wants to litter our city like they did, but...
There's a couple of them that I pull, they're just repeat offenders, yeah.
I'm just begging for that, for your committee to look hard and see what we can do to get something done, but, police department, I think, and fire department, I guess you guys had to go and get them all, I think, thank you both for doing it, that's all I'm saying. And, uh, personally, will not patronize any one of them businesses that did that, ever.
So, the interesting thing about Jenny's Mattress, I've been told, is that they're advertising closing signs, but the small print says that they'll be reopening.
Yeah, it's a scam, probably, probably, but I personally will never go into that store, and I encourage everyone else not to go into that store. I'll have to chat with them. Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, thank you.
They're, they're over on 42, across from the US Bank, in that plaza there.
Yeah, we pass them, I pass them on the way home, all the time.
Okay, um, that's it, um, there's no need for an executive session at this point, so, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Come here, I'll say.
Wessels, Ablin, additional discussion? All right, roll call, please, Carrie?
Yes.
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 All right, meeting is adjourned, thank you all.